Yeah.
All right. You're good.
You should, you should take this one.
I don't know.
And I'll take that. And because you're going to be pointing. You name everything?
Eh.
All right. I'm thinking of a glass of water.
She was like.
I want you to stay.
Come off.
All right. All right. What? Do you bring the tie?
I know, right?
All right, so the, for the record, it is 7:52 and we're going to call this meeting back into order. All board members are present from before. We're going to start with the bid giving an overview of some of their concerns over the Morris Avenue.
Three times a charm, right? We got three times.
All right, we'll try to make this a take. We'll get this through. First of all, we do appreciate that, you know, I had a chance to review the modified drawings today versus what was submitted last time based on our letter and certainly appreciate that an effort was made to try to accommodate some of our questions, concerns. We still have some additional questions and comments that we'd like to put out and we also appreciate that sometimes, you know, there's certain comments we can make that may not be easily accommodated, but we at least want to put it up there as food for thought. So, we just want to start with a couple overall kind of comments. As we said, we generally like the building. We do appreciate that they tried to take what's essentially one of the longest blocks in the downtown and try to articulate it so it looks like it's, you know, six or seven smaller buildings rather than one monolithic building. And given the scale of our downtown and this label.
I think the market.
Yeah.
Does this start over?
All right, four times a charm.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because he's pointing and I'm like, we gotta say what he's pointing to. This is going to be A5. Applicants five.
And what is it?
This is a Morris Avenue perspective of downtown Springfield Development Morris and Central by the Museo Group and it's a Morris Avenue perspective. It's a rendering.
Okay.
This we don't have to worry about. This will be A6. And this A6 is a material palette for the different types of brick and stone and grading and lighting that we intend to use and flower pointers. And this will be A6. And then A7 will be Morris Avenue and Caldwell Place perspective for downtown Springfield Development.
I will use that drawing.
This drawing is actually just A201. This is exactly the same one we submitted, okay?
Just going to move this so I can see the number.
Is your, is your, A7 now?
Can we try a little bit so we'll tell them what to see?
No, just tell me.
A7 is Morris Avenue and Caldwell Place perspective.
Yeah, but is there a, you said that is sheet A201? Yeah, but you also said it was.
A6.
You said that was 201? Sheet 201?
This is A201. I did not mark A201 because you have that.
Got it, thank you. Okay.
All right. So.
You sure you're ready to go now?
I'm ready.
Now you're ready.
So, as we were saying, you know, we appreciate that they've tried, I'm pointing to Board A5, that they tried to design this building so it wasn't overly monolithic in the downtown. So that's certainly a plus and is appreciated. One of the concerns we voiced in our, our original letter, which they've addressed to some degree or made some attempt to address, is that the frequency of the pilasters was a little bit of a concern, was a concern because it starts to break up a lot of the storefronts. Now, the rendering shows at the far end, I'm pointing to A7 at the corner here of Morris and Caldwell, they did change the fenestration here to open this up a little bit more, which is nice, but on the flip side as well, there's a balance we appreciate because you don't want the whole building to look like this, you know, that you want it to be articulated. Our, our question would be, is it possible to take this corner and try to modulate it somewhat because it's hard to tell how wide the, the actual windows are. Are any of the windows less than, storefront windows less than six feet?
I don't believe so, but I have a scale and I can, I can scale it off. I mean, generally speaking, and thank you for your comments, the intention was to address the, the bid letter and as you said, along Caldwell and most notably retail, retail space number six, which is on the corner that has been opened up. Part of the issues that we've been having is that the column grid and the fenestration, there's a misalignment. So that has necessitated the, the need for some columns so as to not have structural columns exposed and to kind of hide them. So, yes.
So, for example, again, my request would be to maybe take a look at that again. If I take this architectural segment here, you've got the, the three columns and these don't align here, could one column go, for example, there and you would have a different pattern like you have here for this segment and that might open it up?
Thank you for that. Part of the rationale behind that is to have a logic from the base to the, to the body of the massing, to have that vertical articulation and vertical continuity. But surely, I appreciate what you're saying. I mean, these, if there can be a lack, or if there, if there can be a reduction, we will attempt to do that.
So that would, what we would ask for them to take a look at that and if they could, you know, edit that a little, that would be a plus. Another comment that we were concerned about in understanding.
Can I interrupt you one second? Keenan, if there's anything you want to jump on in this, please interrupt because you're part of this plan.
Yep.
Had to do with the depth of the pilasters and again, appreciate that, you know, things have thickness and some depth actually helps the building look richer and nicer, but of course, becomes more of a concern when the building has wider windows, like you see at this end, the depth is less of an issue, 12 inches, but when you have a 12 inch deep pilaster and a four to six foot wide window, it becomes a little more difficult. And remember, from a bid's point of view, we want to promote retail in the downtown and what does that mean? We get a tremendous amount of traffic that's going up and down Morris Avenue. They're not necessarily, we're not necessarily a destination yet, but people are passing through. We want to capitalize on that. So, I'm going to pass one little piece of information which is helpful. The United States Sound Council with UPenn has done extensive studies, visibility studies of how people look at signage and all this stuff when they're driving. The rule of thumb is that if you imagine you're sitting in a car, 10 degree angle to each side of center is what people can safely look at when you're driving a car. Any further than that, you start to get into situations, unless you're at a stoplight or something, but generally when you're driving, you know, you're kind of looking in that window. So, this perspective is taken over on the sidewalk, which isn't even where people really drive, and you can start to see that this is how tight that starts to look, how busy it starts to look. And when you're on this side, this is not necessarily realistic from a, it's realistic how the building may look, but not a perception from a vehicle because we're on the opposite sidewalk as a pedestrian, whereas if I were driving here, a lot of those windows are going to be in a shadow, kind of a visual shadow of the pilaster. Now, we're not saying that they shouldn't have some depth. We would just request if you could take a closer look at that. Maybe they could be six to eight inches. They don't need to be 12. As well as could, you know, some, like we said, some of this editing because it feels, and again, this is purely subjective, but it starts to feel more like a, almost like a medical professional building on the first floor or something like that. Yes, the awnings dress it up and all that, but that close fenestration. So that was one of the issues we wanted to, to talk about. And as long as we're talking about the fenestration, we had some thoughts about the glass and the windows. So, we love the fact that there, since there isn't much room in the sidewalk for street trees and all that, that they are incorporating the planters and everything into this building because it will help soften the streetscape and where it lands.
To your point earlier about, this, this might be more helpful. This is on the corner of Center Street and, and Morris Avenue towards the right.
What's the exhibit number?
A8. Center Street perspective. So this would show, and this is representative of that condition, you know, the base basically.
Yep. Thank you. And this is A8. So, one of the things, and we talked about with the earlier scheme, which I think you've adjusted, was it looked like when you had the pilasters, there was also an internal frame addition. So is that frame gone now?
That has been removed, yes.
Okay, so that's great because it expands the glass area. Excellent. I, we also had a comment, we were concerned about the awnings. The awnings are visual markers that help people find entrances and so forth and it looks like you addressed that as well to get them to entrance.
We did, yes. We attempted to. We, at, at every entrance now, there is an awning to signify its entrance. There are others as well as you can see there, but, but that's really to, to call it the corner. But yes, every entrance now has it.
But we have ordinances also on the awnings.
On the awnings.
We have, on a new development, we have ordinances and all that and you should check that out with the awnings and that.
We do.
I know, I'm just saying, you know, he's asking about ordinances. We have ordinances that we just put into.
Our comment from the bid was that they were used originally in the first set, they had awnings in the middle and the door was over here, so they weren't really used to architecturally help people find entrances. So we weren't necessarily talking about awning style. It was more about how they were manifesting themselves as a tool for pedestrians to actually locate the store in this big building, right? The other comment, I'm going to just talk about fenestration, has to do with the planters. So we were starting to mention that it's hard to tell how tall the planters are. They seem to vary over the course of the building. Some of these look taller, one of the, and maybe you could address this. The concern was that it's really important, especially our understanding this, the intent for maybe the two-corner demise spaces was to possibly a restaurant or something there. And as I'm sure people understand, being able to see in as well as see out is important to the success of restaurants. So, the concern was, how tall are the planters, including when you actually add the plants? Because when people are sitting at a table, if these planters and plants are up to 30, 36 inches, is that a problem?
So, and thank you for that. We, we did revise the, the renderings to, to reflect the, you know, the plantings and, and relocated their, relocated them to be, I guess more in keeping with, with what your intention was. So the planters are 18 inches tall. That's consistent. The planting and I have an exhibit showing the, the plant types for each planter and the intention being that they, they are essentially low spilling type plants. I can bring that up if you'd like to see.
If they're 18 inches tall with plants or plus plants?
No.
With plants?
The planter itself is 18 inches.
Plus plants or another four. So if it's under 20 inches or so, it's probably fine.
With itself being 24 inches.
Right. Now, the other question would be if, are these permanent, built-in or are they movable? Let's say entrance had to move over time.
They do move, yes.
Okay. Another question related to planters had to do with maintenance watering since they're tucked in. Even though we know rain doesn't necessarily fall straight, it does shelter them somewhat. How are they going to be maintained?
So, I think the owner might want to speak to this, but we, we will have hose bibs, but I, it's, I don't believe it's the intention to have the, the building management maintain the planters.
Correct that. It is the intention, the builder manager would maintain the planters.
In the, in the bid's experience.
Board Secretary of Flowers.
If the building isn't, doesn't maintain them, they're not going to be maintained. Okay. All right. So, now, on the restaurants, we also commented that has any thought, you're showing tables, chairs and things, you have larger sidewalk areas. Was any consideration given to providing doors that pivot, open, slide so that the restaurant could spill out and energize the sidewalks?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I guess in, in this current configuration, the way we're seeing and, and I guess back to your point about the, the closeness or, of the bays at the, at the first floor, that, that can't really happen. I mean, if we can go to the plan, I can show you those pocketing doors, there's a number of ways of doing it. You could, you could have a pocketing door and, or you could have bifold doors here. So, right now, this, the current iteration, what we're proposing does not accommodate that.
Is that something that could be done? In other words, there's also the type that they just pivot as well. So they can pivot on themselves. Is that something that could be investigated?
I think you talked about that, yes, yes.
And that would probably be an amenity that would help lease the spaces as well to really take advantage of the sidewalk. All right. So, the next question has to do with, or comment had to do with signage. So, we appreciate that you addressed our concerns originally because it wasn't consistent. It seemed to not fit into the space. I recognize that you put in a sign band. So the first question we have to do is, it looked like, at least from a intent point of view and what I saw on the drawings, that you're, you've changed the 15 inch sign spec to 12 inches, at two inch deep. It's an LED 2700 Kelvin, right? And is it your intent that all of the signs on the building are meant to be the same so, same style, size, color?
The intention is for that to be the standard, yes. Right. With, with, with the ability to put graphics on, on an awning adjacent to the entrance.
And well, I'm not familiar offhand with the, if that's a permitted option with the signage ordinance and awnings, but.
So, let me, let me interrupt. So, everything is approved? I mean, it's within the, it's within, within redevelopment plan?
I would say this, there's a lot of retail space within this project. I think everyone wants to retail to be successful. I really view that the signage here is placeholders.
Yeah.
You know, it's the board's practice to have sign packages come back for a cursory review at a later time. I think that makes sense here. Another comment raised by Mr. Cross getting bid was the possibility of having some blade signage on the building.
And you agreed with that.
And I do agree that that may.
Is that a deviation?
That may make sense, yes. It's not something that's expressly permitted by the current ordinance, but in this situation, it's given the amount of retail, the fact that it's on center as well as Caldwell, to really maximize the visibility there, I think it can be done in a very tasteful way. In combination with wall signage, that would work nicely.
On narrow streets like Morris Avenue, having, projecting signs are much more effective than wall signs. So, that is one of our concerns is that the 12 inch sign is small, given the scale of the building, the repetitious, you know, we're bioengineered to see what's different, not what's the same. So aesthetically, having a similar style, we believe, is nice looking, but it's not necessarily helpful to the retailers. So having them, the ability to have a projecting sign and maybe the ability to create more character display, not necessarily each one has to be the same, you know, rectangle with their simple letters.
Respectfully, we have a problem because what he's asking for, your ordinance doesn't allow. Well, that, that gives us the ability to grant a deviation and I think our planner is kind of supporting what he's asking. Right, so we would have to do whatever you want. Yeah, no, I'm saying, I think the planner.
It's a sign package, what, what you said. In other words, if everything got approved right now, you still have to give a signed package of everything and we, and they have to go over.
It would go, it would go to them for review. If they have concerns, it comes to us. That's. The issue is, you're talking about blade signs. Blade signs don't permit a yard. And what he's saying is, he's recommending to us that it's something we should consider granting a deviation for, is that correct? So, part of this package, you would say if. Yeah. You would grant, I, I, I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing.
Right now, he could suggest, and I'm not being, I don't want to be nasty, but he could suggest whatever he'd like.
Right.
They have, we have ordinance that we've looked at, we've taken recommendations and we're not going to change them just for that.
So what I'm, I just want to make sure I'm saying the same thing. What he's asking for is the permission to put a blade sign. Your ordinance doesn't permit a blade sign.
Right.
I'm not asking for a blade.
No.
So what we're saying is, if, our planner is saying that he feels it's something that we should consider as a board to grant a deviation to allow when they put together their sign.
But the applicant isn't asking for that.
That's, that's. I just want to make sure we all agree, we understand. I'm not asking.
No, no, you're right.
So to comment on the bid.
I get your point there.
Digest the comment from bid and from the planner.
Yeah.
But the applicant is not making the request at this time.
I would say to the applicant that if you drive the length of Morris Avenue, there's no other towns currently that have blade signs on their buildings. Most of them are all parallel, lost in the clutter, that this would also not only help your project stand out, but it would also mark along Morris Avenue, something changing. And when people stop, that's when they look and I think it would help, not only the downtown, but help the success of your project and the retailers. So, we would respectfully ask the, the committee to consider that and ask the applicant to consider including that if that's something they would permit.
I'm not asking for a blade sign. I'm not asking for a waiver or a deviation to request a blade sign. If the board, after listening to the bid, thinks that having blade signs is a good policy, the board may so responsibly, and I will not object, to putting in a provision that allows the developer or the potential tenants to obtain a blade sign.
Understood, counsel.
Okay, that's, that's what I think I was hearing towards. I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing.
So for the signage, how tall actually is the sign band itself? If that's a 12 inch sign.
Two feet.
So it's 24 inches. Okay. And so you're saying that this sign here has 12 inches of space above and below it?
Six inches above, six inches below.
Right, right.
24 inch sign.
That's high math. Apologize, exactly. Okay, so, one of the concerns that was expressed in the bid is that there, I guess if you, is that the 12 inch sign may be small, given, especially you're showing all uppercase. Is it, your intent is all uppercase or upper lowercase? Do they have the, do they have the, do they have the questions?
We don't know. We don't know. We don't know who our tenants are.
It's a tenant, the tenant's going to end up deciding what to do here.
Well, not, that's not.
I think I can save us a lot of time.
Yeah, I know what you're going to say. Anything with signs will come back.
Okay.
And it's going to be, what they're going to do is submit, I'm going to use the term, a kit of cards, which is going to show signage in a whole package that's uniformed for the building for whatever that means. And apparently the board is willing to allow our professionals to take a look, come up with something that works. What you're doing as the spokesperson for the bid is making a number of suggestions that they can then take into account. If you don't hear any objections up here, then they'll probably take them into account and that'll be part of the package and the guys will look at it and they'll say, yeah, that's wonderful or I got some other ideas. Fair?
Good. But what, how much other stuff do you have?
All right, so, one of the concerns that we had had to do with the upper fenestration. Again, as you look down the building, even though they have articulated the, the upper portion, granted, while the bid primarily focuses on the retail effect, you know, how the building looks on the upper floors also impacts the aesthetics of the downtown, there was a concern that there was a lot of the window, even though the materials changed, some of the detailing around the windows and the window types were highly repetitious and again, we were wondering if there was a way that there could be a little more variety because the apartment plans have a certain amount of flexibility. And there was also a concern that this detail where I understand is a mechanical louver actually looks like a recessed panel of sorts. My understanding, which we chatted for a couple minutes on pointing to A5, is that this is meant to be a mechanical screen, but if you look here at the rendering, and again, it's a rendering, I don't know if it's going to look different, this panel beneath it looks deeper or is deep as the window, so it's kind of a little odd detail and just trying to understand what that really is going to look like. I don't know if you want to address that.
So, you're correct in, in saying that, that it's a mechanical louver. The intention is to hide the mechanical, excuse me. Intention is to try to, to develop a motif or a theme around the entirety of the building. So we have instances where we have Juliet balconies and railings. We're proposing to use this mesh and similarly.
Forgot to mark it now.
Okay, well, it's, it's part of A6. It fell off, yeah. So the intention would be to have something like this to, to, to play off of that.
I know in my experience, a lot of times there's a transparency index that they give to certain kinds of grills, to let you know what you can see through it. You know, this appears to be fairly transparent. It's, as opposed to some which allow air to travel through it, but not at visibility. So, again, I'm not sure if it's going to look more like that or it's going to look more like a panel. Our concern is just that if it's transparent like it looks there, it feels like an odd detail.
We spent quite a bit of time working with the staff and this is what we've come up with, Jordan. We've had at least six discussions regarding these issues. I think the applicant is really done in respect to making modifications at this point, especially with the detail to be discussed. Do you think this is a, seriously, do you think this is a valid point?
Specifically on the back panel?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with what's proposed.
What's proposed? Okay, I mean, I think we incorporated a lot.
Look, I'm just running through our concerns and you will decide what's critical, what's important or not. We noticed that you're, you're recommending some planners on some of the upper floors. One of our concerns was that who is going to maintain those planners? Who's planting them? How do we make sure if they're in these apartments, one apartment is dead, the other apartment has roses, the other apartment, to have a consistent look?
So, initially they'd be planted by the building management, but, but the intention would be to have the tenants take care of them. They are drained internally, so they, they will not fall onto the.
So, so that's good that they're drained internally, so nothing's dripping on the sidewalk. But call the bid a skeptic. I mean, we're not so sure that the apartment dwellers will want to take charge of these planters. We do like the look of it, just not sure how it's going to look when you have this checkerboard of different responsibilities and owners. Okay.
I think that's a good amount of concern. How do you plan on addressing that? At this point, our position is the tenants are going to have to maintain the flowers. It's something the board knows strongly about, we can revisit it. It's a little difficult to do. We have to go into people's apartments. It's a little complicated. So right now, we're taking the position that the ones that are inside the tenant units are going to have to be maintained by the tenant. Keenan, how's this done?
It's sort of an unusual situation. I don't know if there's any provision that they can put in lease agreements that allows them to enforce something if they're not being properly maintained. Maybe it's something we can work out.
I'm happy to work with the administration and work with them to come up with some language to put in a lease. It puts a little pressure on the tenants to make sure that they're going to get rid of it and maybe even gives us a right of access if it is a failure.
I don't know how you do that.
I don't either. I don't either. I'm, I'm happy to work with you guys. I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't, I don't see this in Morris Town or Westfield or, you know, it's overkill. Yes, putting planners on the outside.
Is it necessary to put the planners? Keenan?
I don't think it's necessary. They put those as part of their.
It looks great on a, on a rendering. It looks great on a rendering, but it has to live for however many years this is there.
If there's no certainty with respect to maintenance of these things, they become.
What else can we do? What would be there? Just. Mesh. How would that look compared to? Keenan, how would that look?
Meshy.
Meshy?
In lieu, in lieu of the planter, it would potentially be something like this, which would play off of the railings, the Juliet balconies.
How would that look, in your opinion? You think it'd look fine?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that the planters help with the proportions of the mass. I do think that, that that's a viable, I mean, you know, there's an opacity that's afforded by the planters. That's not, you know, something such as this would not be as opaque. But I, surely, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's definitely an option.
Well, Mr. Wish, I know where you stand, Mr. Brendel. Let's just end this thing.
On the planter specifically?
Yeah.
I think if maintenance is going to be a problem, then I would abandon the planters.
Sharon?
Agreed.
David?
Maintenance will be a problem, but are we, we're also making sure that people can't put up.
Satellite dish?
Satellite dish and things like that.
Yeah, but that was already discussed. That's already been discussed.
That's what they care of. But my point is, if someone goes out and buys a plant, puts it in that little area, is there anything like putting a satellite dish or other things that prevents that?
I think it is what it is. If they're buying it and they paid for it, they're going to maintain it.
Right, so my point is, if it's there and it's empty, then it's like an empty plant. So, if it's not there, and people buy plants and put it up, there could be dead plants there also, so I don't care.
It's up to people.
A mirror.
That's it, I don't want a mirror.
It's up to the people who rent it.
Oh, okay. If it's there, if it's empty...
We're agnostic. If you want planters, believe the planters. If you don't, you'll put a mesh screen, it'll look like what's on the front, and I think everybody can look...
What does the board want?
I think architecturally, if it's there and it's empty, let's just make sure it doesn't look unsightly.
But they're saying by adding the, if they just put the mesh up instead of the planters?
It's going to look about, it's going to be a little about.
I don't, sorry, I don't think in the empty planters will be unsightly. I mean, if they are...
That's, I agree with that.
I don't know, what does the board want?
It was just a maintenance issue, that's really all.
Yeah, I don't think it's the empty planters, I think it's the dead plants and the not-maintained plants that look unsightly.
All right, so I think the board's basically saying, "Take it out, put mesh."
You got it.
All right, good, continue.
And lastly, I'll finish up, because I know you've got a few other things. Do you have the interior court elevation?
Yeah, so, sir, we have more to get to, so I just...
This is my last.
Okay. It's been important, so...
What is, what's A9?
Yeah, A9 is the courtyard perspective, downtown Springfield development.
Thank you.
The only, we saw that you added the planters along there, which we thought was good. The only comments we have here was, we noticed that you had an inconsistent door type, like these are the back to the retail, some were full glass, some were half-glass panel, not sure why they're the same, you know, why that was different, why they all wouldn't be the same. You also had some glass here that made the back more inviting, but none along here, and as far as we can tell, it appeared that the retail spaces here are very similar to there. So, the question is, could some of the same fenestration that you have here be added along this wall to make it seem the same from a retail?
Yes, that can happen. Yes.
All right, those are our comments, and thank you for you giving the bid opportunity to voice our comments.
I just want to make sure before we jump, if you will, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure our client is comfortable with the recommendation that we just agreed to by changing the rear, adding some additional fenestration.
First, I'm comfortable with that.
So, I just want to, if he's going to leave, the board have any questions?
No.
Any members of the public wish to ask any questions of this? It was our township witness, but any members of the public? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to belabor or delay. The issue of the planter came up, and so we have to reconcile from the architectural view with what was in there from the site plan view. Ballards were required part of the preliminary, they are no longer part of it. The testimony from the first site plan was we were going to use planters for protection and safety to the Morris Avenue streetscape. So, I think the 18-inch-high planter should be envisioned as far as what that all was there.
I thought that's what we said we were doing.
Yeah, but is 18 inches enough from a safety perspective? We were, we were talking just a minute ago about architecturally, what it was like to prevent the visual of the space.
So, what, how high should they be? What have you seen on other developments?
You should be higher than what the bumper is on a vehicle.
Okay, so is that two feet?
Yeah.
So, is that an issue?
So, if you look at our renderings, you'll see that the 18-inch plus six or seven-inch plantings are in the middle. The ballards were kind of along the edge of the sidewalk, if you will, and we don't show anything there, because we didn't know what the decision was. Ballards or much larger planters would be...
I think your recommendation...
The ballards are out, based upon the applicant's drawings. The testimony from the first meeting, September meeting, was that there was going to be the utilization of planters to guard...
So, how high do you think those planters should be?
Again, 18 inches may not be sufficient.
Okay, so is 20...
Some flexibility in reconciling the two goals.
We will work with...
Fair enough.
We will work with the administration, Mr. Disco and Mr. Keenan, to come up with whatever.
The height of the ballards.
The height of the ballard, the height of the planter.
Planters, yes.
To create the, I guess, buffering effect.
Of a car.
For one coming traffic.
What's the intent? The ballards are there to prevent...
There's no ballard.
Ballards are in place to protect against a vehicle strike?
Yes.
Right? So, are 18-inch planters going to replicate what a ballard would do?
Well, he was saying to make them higher, so that way...
I'm saying structurally, not just height.
Again, there's no, there's no more ballards, and it was a condition in the preliminary that that has been removed based upon the testimony.
So, what's the safer thing? I think aesthetically, we said the planters look nicer, but is that keep, is that safe enough as a ballard?
Yes, that the mass of a planter can be sufficient to guard against vehicles, yes. Again, the goal was, we were trying to enhance the utilization of the sidewalk area for pedestrians and for people who are at restaurant, outdoor cafe seating, the whole like. This was something that the board chairman at the last meeting said was very important, that we had to have these planters.
Especially since we have the additional space on the sidewalk now, as opposed to the other...
There's two sets of planters, if you will. There's the ones that appear between the fenestration, and there's the ones that are on the corners of Caldwell and...
The safety ones have to be higher, and you'll work with the township, our board attorney, our board engineer to resolve it. The ones that are, the building ones, in the building, those are gone, you're on the mesh.
I think it's an important distinction, what Mr. Webster's suggesting, is that the planters along the building, which is, I think, was the architectural point of view, I think they're mutually exclusive of each other.
Yes.
So, I think we're getting the answer that I was trying to prod, that's all. I wanted to reconcile that the fact that we have planters for safety, and there's also the planters for the architectural...
Settles.
Settles.
The safety ones, you're going to come up with a specific height to make them safe? That are equal to what a ballard?
As long as we're thinking about it, that's all good.
And I will comply with whatever the team comes up with, whatever they come up with.
Anything, architect, if you want to kind of go through, Mr. Hughes sent you guys a letter?
Sure.
If you want to kind of review that, and then I think that'll be sufficient.
Thank you.
So, if you have a copy of his letter dated, because I have some questions too. December 23rd. The one thing that I want you to focus on, you know, when you go through it, and this may be you, counselor, is item four with the bedroom mix, because I specifically recall with the three bedrooms not being on site, because we transferred the allocation to another project. So, keep that in mind when we...
Absolutely. I think it goes a little clearer.
Go ahead.
I mean, the three bedrooms simply require a different computation of parking. So, the three bedrooms, RSIS, as far as you can go, spaces, so it comes up to 171 spaces that are required. We have 203, so I think from a parking standpoint, it really doesn't matter.
But this is a market rate, isn't it?
They're affordable rentals. All the three bedrooms are affordable rentals, per our agreement with the city, per our agreement with the town.
So, just refresh my...
The three bedrooms are not...
Mr. Chairman? I think I'll clarify that, but I think what you're referring to is, it sacks the situation that we ran into, where they were going to address the shortfall of three bedroom units in this project. My understanding is that they can provide three three-bedroom units. I think the requirement was five, so they were short two three-bedroom units, and those are the ones that were satisfied as part of the Saxon development.
Perfect.
And then an additional two two-bedroom units were picked up as part of this problem.
That's fine, okay. I get it now. Then, so for parking, if you're still compliant...
Parking was compliant, so I don't think that's a significant issue.
Okay, so we're good with the letter, and then that should be sufficient for tonight.
The first issue in the letter is obviously a setback on the roof, and so we'll go through that.
Okay, so...
I just want to set the stage a little bit. In our preliminary plan, this was not a variance, but in our process of working with the administration, and working with the planning department, the engineering department, to create a different depth on each of these, to create some depth, that essentially were created as variance. The actual units and the location of the units hasn't moved. They were exactly where they were, exactly the same place, just us undulating the rooftop to create, so it doesn't look like one wall already planted, creating new variance. So, they'll show you, and it's in the plan actually that you have in front of you, but that's really what happened. It's not, it's a self-inflicted variance, and you can try to make it look a little bit fancier and a little bit nicer.
When you kind of go through this, address the height of the building, how this views with this buffer, this thing?
Sure, okay. This is sheet A105, fourth floor living, fourth floor, fourth living level plan. So, there are a number of instances where...
I mean, I think we're... The size of the height of the roof.
Okay. So, sheet A201. With the average grade being elevation 93.18, the building height to the top of the Mansard, the very top of the Mansard, is 59 foot four.
Can you indicate where that...
You don't need a waiver.
Sure, so that is this line right here, the very top of the building.
The top, 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 top.
There's a dimension towards the left-hand portion of detail 1A201 that describes and illustrates what the dimension is being taken from.
So, we now have the highest issues, exact same height as before, we got some change. Again, the only thing that's even making us look at the roof is that we had to bump in and out a little bit on the sides and the front to accommodate the different, given the building, the contour, or what do you call this, this sculpt, a sculpting, let's see, let's see.
Well, to articulate the base...
Maybe a architect.
Right, right, right. Really, I mean, you're right, the impetus, or what precipitated this was the, for lack of a better term, jogging in and out of the massing. And whereas previously, the roof line was consistent and straight, now it jogs to follow the masses below.
So, what we did was, we pulled back as much as we could on some sides, so the building's actually a little smaller on top, but in some places, we couldn't change anymore because of the fact that simply the structure just didn't fit, staircases, the windows lining it up. So, this is kind of the best we had. There's two, there's two ways to do it. The first way is to have the building go straight, which we've all spent the last six months saying that we don't want that. The other is to kind of cut off some of the Mansard roof, which makes it look terrible.
Excuse me, sorry about that.
It doesn't really make any sense. So, we're hoping that the board understands that this is kind of a self-inflicted boom a little bit, and that the units are in the exact same place they were before, in the exact same way they were before, just that the roof line's moved back a little bit, which is what's creating variance.
So, the variance you need is, I'm sorry.
Let me explain it, because I don't think anyone's really explaining it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, the redevelopment plan, right, allows a five-story building, but it says the fifth story, the mass of the fifth story needs to be stepped back 10 feet from the floor below, you know, from the front facade of the building.
So, it's less to see?
If you look at the plan for the fifth level, you'll see the Mansard roof, in most cases, is 10 feet off the roof line. But the way that the floor below, the facade sort of jumps in and out, there are certain points where it gets closer than 10 feet. So, what they're saying is, they kind of kept the fifth story where it was, as then, when they adjusted the floor below to kind of jut in and out. What we're saying is, that's not creating a deviation, because strictly, they're not complying with the technical requirement. So, instead of also making the fifth story sort of jog with the floors below, they kind of just kept it at the same, the same line, which creates the deviation situation.
So, when below is set in, then the fifth story is not 10 feet, as it would be nine feet or whatever?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
And is this done, this was put into place, this 10-foot, so that way, when buildings are higher, it's easier, it's more sh, buffering the height?
The intent was, you know, there was concern about a five-story building in the downtown, so what can we do to address the visual impacts of the taller building? And that was the tent, so the tent was stepped back for the fifth floor.
Okay, so can you explain why this is important and why this deviation or whatever should be granted?
Sure, so, this is an example, or illustrates the specific condition, the specific conditions that were in Mr. Hughes and Mr. Disco's letter. So, whereas the building, and I'm pointing specifically to units 92 and 93, whereas previously, the outermost line was where the stories below were, they have been set back based on, you know, what we're talking about, to help the massing read vertically. Mr. Hughes is correct in that, for that one foot three, there is an encroachment within that 10-foot stepback line. To modify the roof line, given how tight the units are, substantially affects its feasibility as a unit. You know, there, we do have a proposed solution, which would be to sever that Mansard, but the units are such that it's very difficult to get those units to work, given that they're duplex units, there's a lot of things that need to align vertically as well as horizontally. So, this is, this is what was proposed, this is a potential option that would essentially sever the Mansard.
So, Keenan and Mike, can you kind of talk?
Which drawing are you on?
Our A105 is different than your A105.
Yeah, I don't...
Brett? This is a drawing that was...
This is new?
This is new.
All right, so we need to mark this exhibit, and then maybe if you could... Mr. Disco and Hughes, can you help us understand?
I drew this.
Yeah, you drew this, explain this.
So, and I put it in my memo, along Caldwell Place, the nearest infraction is eight feet, okay? Along Center Street, the nearest infraction is seven feet, instead of 10. Those right-of-ways are much narrower, they're 50-foot right-of-ways as opposed to the Morris Avenue. So, I tried to present, Morris Avenue is really where you're going to notice this. If you're on the other side of the street on Morris Avenue, you're going to see the fifth level, the upper story level. I'm not as concerned on Caldwell and Center, because again, you have less right-of-way, it's a better angle, if you can all visualize that, and the infraction is eight feet versus 10, and seven feet versus 10 on a sloped mansion. But on Morris Avenue, it is four feet and five feet in some areas, particularly over the lobby areas.
So...
Yeah. So, maybe that can be adjusted in some way.
It absolutely can be, and to be honest, there is a drafting error in the roof plan in that it is showing the location of the wall, and that, if you can see here, it's, the roof plan is set back more than what we're proposing in the elevations. The roof plan is set back to align with the interior wall, the exterior wall of the building and not the balcony, which is what is being shown on the elevations.
What is our proposed deviation?
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Yeah, right.
So, nine feet on Morris Avenue. So, it's nine feet and seven.
Do you guys, one second, do you guys feel that that's reasonable?
I just want to understand, no, what the, what is the fix? Because this is the first time we're seeing that sheet.
Yeah, right, this...
We can't identify what the fix is from this...
Do you want to go, take off?